Okay.
Kevin on the screen.
In the meeting.
Okay, yeah.
The board of selectmen meeting Tuesday, May eighteenth. At five thirty. We'll open the meeting in open session and we'll take a roll call vote to enter executive session. Bill?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, sir.
I apologize. You just you need to you need someone needs to make a motion and you have to have a second before you take the vote.
And you have to read the.
For purposes in a minute and you and you and you should cite the you should cite the specific exemption in the in the motion.
Okay. Well, we're going to executive session. Is there there a motion?
I'll make a motion to go into executive.
Dan.
Pursuant to read the thing. Wait, we haven't made the motion yet. Just wait pursuant.
To so and to Mass General Watch after thirty A, section twenty one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non use union personnel interim finance director votes may be taken.
Second.
For a second. For a second.
I did. I just seconded.
Okay. Roll call, Dan.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Myself. Yes. We will call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen Tuesday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty one to water. We're a little about a half hour late. Meeting called the water, a discussion possible vote on discussion of Articles four and five on the annual town meeting warrant.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. If you guys don't mind, I'd like to take this off while I present. My presentation is very, very brief. I just wanted to assure the board and the public that the Groveland Study Committee, Government Study Committee is in full compliance, full compliance with the vote that you took on March fifteenth, four to one in favor of a plan, and that plan is very accurately enumerated in Articles four and five. Article four.
Should that be turned? So Joe's in the screen a little bit better.
So article four is to see if the town will vote to petition the general court to repeal chapter sixty of Acts and Resolts of nineteen eighty eight created in finance. So so Article four asks the town meeting to vote on repealing the law, the town of Selectman, put in place through a special acts back in nineteen eighty eight. And that's necessary because that clears the way for one of two ways that the Board of Selectmen can fulfill their desire to hire a town administrator, and I'll explain what those two ways are. Article five asks essentially a temporary measure on hiring a town administrator to see if the town will vote to accept the provision of Mass General, chapter forty one, section twenty three eight. So what happened a couple of weeks ago at the special meeting is there was a little bit of confusion, and I'm here to clear that up. We want to fulfill our obligation to the Board of Selectmen. You voted four to one for what we call the two step method, and that is step number one. We're going to ask the town meeting to repeal the Finance Director bylaw that was a special act that was created back in nineteen eighty eight, and then step number also part of step number one is hire a town administrator under existing law, and that existing law is chapter forty one, twenty three eight. That's it. That's all we would do this year. Now, I will say that at town meeting, I will ask the moderator for a vote to reverse those. I think it would be better to ask the town meeting. Shall we have a town administrator and have a healthy discussion and debate about that under chapter forty one, twenty three eight, which is existing law? And then if that's successful, then that's going to, you know, have impact on how people think about repealing the finance directors. I think it's more logical to ask for would you like to have a town administrator? And if so, well, to get there, we need to get rid of the finance director position. So that's more natural cause, a natural way to 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 create that. Now, so what the attorneys did, however, is something that could be valuable to you next year. So that if by next year, we have repealed the Finance Director because the town meeting voted for it this year, and between now and then, you have hired a town administrator temporarily under existing law, then the attorneys have already done the work for a special act to appoint the town administrator. So why would we want to do it through a special act? Simply because through a special act, we can dial in and we can customize it a little bit better to your liking to you to 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 meet your needs a little bit better. So that's what that work that the attorneys have done. They took our proposal and they created this wonderful document that now all you need to do is put it away, put it on file. It's not supposed to be out there for this year. That was not our intent. That's not what you voted on. You only voted for repeal Finance Director and let's temporarily hire a town administrator with existing law. I'd like to reverse that. I'll make up. I'm going to ask for that, and that's all we do for this year. Then if it is the pleasure of this board to reissue the charge back to our committee, not going to be a heavy lifting because the the document that the attorney has already created this year to create a special law with town administration, just take it out of the file. We're not going to work as hard as we did, not that much to do. And then but you will have to reissue that charge. Remember, this is not my project. It's not the town of the committee's project. This is your project. You effectively charged us to act in an advisory capacity to come up with a pathway on how to create a town administrator, and we feel that we we met that charge and we would be out of compliance with the the vote that you took on March fifteenth, if we did it any other way. You told us how, you know, we this we suggested how to do it. You put it correctly into the warrant article, except the the order is a little bit off, and we want to make sure that we're we're in compliance with that with that vote. Because what was suggested on at the special meeting, and I believe Dan McDonald had caught on to it, that there was something like it seemed like we're also trying to jam down the, you know, people's throats, a special act for town administrator. No, that's not what we planned. That's not what the warrant says, and that's not what the vote was. So that's it. That's my presentation. Questions or comments?
Well, any questions for Joe? Yeah.
No question whether or not anyone wants to jam it on anyone's throat. I just in terms of inclusion in the process, I think I think it's a big decision. It's a crossroads, you know? You know, change in government. So, you know, low participation on the elections. I anticipate without a crystal ball. I anticipate low turnout for a lot of things this year. But I I just my preference, I would feel a lot more. I would feel more comfortable about it if it was on a general ballot. Typically, I don't want to. We got a five thousand registered voters. Plus or minus. Okay. I don't want to be fake news, but about that. Usually in a normal election, we get what eleven hundred people show up, twelve hundred somewhere. We usually break a grand. Is that fair enough? I don't know if people agree with me on that. Off topic, but I would like the election to be in November to coincide with the other state elections, but that's another issue.
Get the numbers up.
Another day, right? Get the numbers up more, you know, because the purest form of democracy to me is the form that includes the most amount of legal voters. Okay. So if we have our standard fair town meeting with a minimum of a hundred people, I I just think it's it's just not indicative of the, you know, consensus. I don't get a woman fuzzy about it. I think it's the special interest group that wants it, but it is has more incentive that's to show up because they have the, you know, you you put hours into it. I get it. So the people with the most vested time and energy into something show up. So I think the town meeting in that regard is kind of is my opinion. I think it's a special interest meeting. I think we're just, I think if we could put it off, unless there's an urgency, and I haven't heard that because I, you know, and again, I can't do everything and go everywhere and listen to everything. I mean, I've got a life. So if I could hear from you, Joe, this is my question. What would be the would it be a fatal flaw if this was put off to a general ballot question? And and what's the sense of urgency if the answer to that is, um, we can't put it off?
Well, I don't, Dan, I respect what you're saying, and I I want you to think about in all due respect, I want you to think about posing that question at town meeting.
I don't know that I will. I don't know. I haven't decided.
I don't want to debate the issue here in a small group and without town meeting there. I I have a presentation in mind, and I want to defend the position on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, not on my committee, and not about me. But so but you bring up a good point, and I think you should bring that up at town meeting. That's a huge issue. You're correct.
I don't want to be surprised by your answer. I want to know. It's time of the essence. I'm trying to get some info out of you, Joe. You're the expert on it, and I defer to you. If time is on the essence, I may change my position on it, Joe. Believe it or not. I I may switch.
That's not incentive for me to debate the matter tonight because.
All right. Then the answer is to be continued. We don't know.
Time meeting.
Done.
Which, by the way, reminds me of something. Would you like me to present this for you? Because we never talked about who's actually going to present it, and I thought we thought our committees, I our committee felt that you should present that it's your baby, but if you want me to present it for you, then I'll open up the discussion. I do have, it's about six minutes. I got to keep it short because we want to get people to be invited into the process. I'm not going to go there with, you know, charts and graphs. It's going to be a six minutes. I rehearsed it in front of the mirror already. And I fogged up that mirror.
I heard it broke.
Jason, oh, yes, I would personally prefer if you did it for a couple of reasons. One, you rested a lot of work into it. Two, you know the ins and outs of it. You also understand what liabilities the town has to continue on with the Finance Director. And so I think those are all things that you could speak on and speak on intelligently. And that's why I would prefer that you on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Well, this is a decision of the board. If you guys want to, you can do that by consent or by vote. I'll I'll accept the position.
Kathy.
Well, I guess I would like your whole committee to be at the town meeting if that was at all possible, if they could.
I don't think they want to be there.
Why?
I I think that they've asked me in a meeting, you represent us. They're going to be there as voters.
Oh, yes, that's what I mean. No, because I would certainly like to recognize the
Yeah.
the the no, the amount of volunteerism
Yeah.
on that task, and the people on that task who have served on so many boards in town, it's given so many hours in town and
That's fine.
and yeah, no, I think that's a lot right now.
Do that at a Board of Selectmen. I'm just kidding.
This process has been going on for years and.
There is one thing I do want to say, Dan, if it'll give you any comfort. We had our first meeting on August. We had our first meeting, August twenty fifth. We were the most transparent committee that I've ever been on. I'm not going to say in the history of Rome that I've ever been on. Every single email that was sent by a private citizen and or a government official, I would tell them before you engage with me or anybody in the committee, it's going to be a public record. We bombarded this young lady with a million emails because every telephone discussion, every email was recorded and became part of the public record. You may remember, Catherine, you must have heard, seen this email a thousand times. Could you make this correspondence for the next Board of Selectmen meeting? We were the most transparent and open, and we did that intentionally for a lot of reasons. The primary one is to fight against this idea that because of the pandemic, people aren't watching and following or participating. We had enormous amount of participating. Every department head, almost every department had wrote us dreams of stuff criticizing us and supporting us. Entire sections of the document were written by people here. So we had enormous amount. In fact, I don't think we would have participation as well if we didn't have the pandemic and use the process, and she will tell you it's a matter of public record. Everything went through that server, the public server. I would tell people, if you meet me at aisle number four in the moolahs, it's going to be part of a public record. And it worked.
Bill.
I'm in agreement with with Jason. I mean, you've you've acted like a midwife for the last, I don't know how many months. I think it's only right you delivered this baby.
Wow, I had a great committee. John Christopher, John Osborne did ninety percent of the work in writing it, and they put in more hours than I did, so we're very thankful for them. It is great work.
Dan, comment?
I'll go along with you being the spokesperson. You're you're on the chair. You you're brainchild and many. But I want you to answer my question. At town meeting, what is the level of urgency? Why now? So I just be ready.
I'm going to answer that question, even if you don't ask it at town.
All right, I'm going to ask. So, you know, and I don't want to be accused of, you know, direct examination or cross, depending on who goes first.
Respect to you, Dan. I got to tell you, in respect to you, the short answer, there is no urgency.
Okay.
Okay. The short answer, there is no.
But sometimes I ask questions. I don't know if anyone can believe this, but I'm going to tell it to you anyway, not because I necessarily advocate for or against something, but simply because I think the question need to be asked so that people are informed. Okay, so sometimes I may, you know,
I agree.
my tact, my approach, my style, maybe I come across as I'm accusing you or something, you know, but I don't think I'm accusing you, you know, bushwhacking anybody. That's not my sentiment. I just, I always want more information. I mean, might irritate people, but I ask many questions, and I just want more information, and the more I know typically I want, it just leads to more questions. So I think we'll get the best decision out of the voters. The more information you put on the table, appreciate the transparency. You know, why? Why now? What's the urgency? There's no urgency. Maybe it could wait till a ballot. Maybe it could wait till later, you know? And that's it. I mean, those are my issues. Why now? Would it hurt to wait? It's time of the essence. Is there irreparable harm that could happen? I mean, I'm not going to all of those issues, and I think people should be able to weigh in on that. That's all.
And I I agree with the Senator to the board that, you know, you you're on the committee. People did all the work. Probably know more about it than what we do. And so the committee, you they they ask you to do it.
I just want to point out that, you know, from my opinion, the huge advantage that town meeting has over the ballot is the opportunity for information and discussion to take place, and I can admit that years ago, before I was on this board and involved in town politics, I went to the ballot and I made uninformed decisions because you walk in to the voting day. Everyone's got a busy life, and you vote what you think. You may not have done your homework, and at town meeting, you do your homework because there's a dialogue there and then on the floor. You ask your questions. Your people are right there. It's a long time for people to go and sit, but it is an efficient use of time if everybody's going to come prepared, ask their questions, and vote their informed decision. I I I think that's a big advantage over the ballot, and everybody has the opportunity to go to the town meeting. If they make the decision not to, that's on us as the voters, and it's also on us to get our, you know, get information out that it is a town meeting, and this was on the table, and everybody needs to come. But I think it does offer an informed decision and an informed choice to be made.
Dan, you want to follow up?
Yeah, I'll follow up with that. I agree with you. The debate's good at town meeting, but similar to things of high magnitude, like a debt exclusion, a two pot test, have the debate on town meeting. Typically, the special interest group is there in numbers, so we can have that debate. But and if it passed that test, go to the ballot. So I think, you know, belts and suspenders on that, get more inclusion on it. The ballot has the advantage of privacy, too. There's a lot of peer pressure. Doesn't affect everybody the same. I mean, I feel comfortable getting out to the room and taking a mic, you know, with a hundred people or a thousand people. There's a lot of people that don't. It's not because they don't care. It's just they're not used to, you know, public speaking or standing up, making arguments. So you know, there's pros and cons, there's trade offs, there's benefits to both. I'd like to see it pass both tests, pass a town meeting, and then put it on a ballot. That's that's to clarify that. So I'm not, you know, a hundred percent against the goal of a town meeting. It is what it is. I mean, you know, that's one part, but I still think to get it before a thousand people is better than a hundred people.
Kathy.
Um, so I've been involved in the town process now for thirty some odd years, starting when we had just a treasurer and an accountant, and then there was a problem in the finances. It was an elected treasurer and unfortunately, you know, it was a big problem with missing money that, you know, there was a large investigation as a result of all that. As a result of going through that and joining the financial board, myself and several several members of the financial board worked very hard to bring forward this Finance Director bylaw, and that was like the great hope, you know, where everybody was very excited about it. It was it was a good thing, and we didn't go to the ballot. We went to a town meeting and I'm sure there were some people that doubted it. They said, what's why do that? We got this, we got that. But ultimately, it was very well received in the town meeting, and then, well, maybe it did have to go back because it was a special act. Did we do special act? Does that go to ballot?
Special act, like we did with the five member board. We have to, first of all, get consent, get approval at town meeting to go to the state to go write the law.
So but then along the path of that, you know, I've went on and off different committees and things that I believed passionately, like expanding the Board of Selectmen, which I think is really, really helped the representation in town. I also enjoy the opportunity to work with a singular member from the board on on small projects, you know, and and that's kind of neat because on the three member board, that was never possible.
By violating.
Right. We don't break the open meeting law. Jason and I go tour some land with Mike Dempsey, and, you know, I could sit down with Bill and crunch some numbers and not break an open meeting law. So I really like that form of committee work that's come to the Board of Selectmen, and I see the move to a town administrator is just a natural outgrowth of a financial director position that has just become overwhelmed with responsibilities and duties, and we need to fine tune and separate it. And if the town meeting passes this, which I hope they will do, we will have the opportunity on the Board of Selectmen to really define what the responsibilities and duties are and are not, and to maybe close some loopholes that we found in our Financial Director bylaw so that, you know, there are checks and balances because I I feel like each step along the way, there's always a way to improve and and make the town on better run. And I think that it will be a benefit to the town, and I worried about the pandemic and the turnout a little bit because, but I thought about this back in January during the worst part of it. And I thought, you know what? We've had the kids in school hybrid throughout this. I've been going to work throughout this. I'm okay. A lot of people that work with me who were worried in the beginning came out. Okay, now all the kids are back to school. I drive past Washington Park. It's blowing up with activity, and people are out and about. And I feel that if we do the code red calls, we get it on the town sign, keep it flashing on that town sign. Don't put a bunch of the messages up. Really advertise it, that I think people are ready to come out and see their neighbors. I know I am. I've been coming out my front door and waving hello to the new people moved on the street and and greeting them finally after spending a whole year and how many months staying six feet apart from everybody. So I feel like we're in a good place. I I'm hopeful that we will have a very strong turnout. But as I said to you before, Dan, I do believe that if there is the worst case, and we don't have a great turnout, I also feel confident that one of our town many members will stand up and ask that question. Is everybody, does everybody feel that we have enough people here to vote this through today? Should we be doing this now? Because that question was raised last year on changes to the personnel bylaw, and that's why they were tabled. So I feel like the town meeting is very responsive. It's not just special interest. I know there's always a little interest here and there. But I'm not thinking that a town administrator is going to have a bandwagon of people arriving, not like when you like build a new school or purchase a sledding hill. You know what I mean? That I don't look at that in this way. I look at this as a a natural improvement for our town government. I'm excited for it, and I'm hopeful for it, but ultimately, it's the will of the town meeting, and I will abide by that.
If I if I may, Chair, my colleague, John Christopher is on. I don't know if John has any comments or questions. I asked him to attend today as well.
John, you have any comments?
No, I'm all set.
You're all set. Thank you. It it's I don't know if there was a last town meeting or 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 the town meeting before that there was an article that needed a a two thirds of majority. And with with one article. And they asked for a a voice vote, and I I said, oh, it failed based upon the voice vote fifty fifty, needed three two thirds. Well, then, and the moderator asked for a show of hands, and lo and behold, there's only about ten people that voted no. And then I was, whoa, people were okay with saying the yays and nays, but they were afraid to show their hand that they were voting against something. And then it was another article a little while later that, again, and this required a fifty fifty vote. And again, the the yays and nays, and they, well, that's close, couldn't could go either way. So they asked for a show of hands. Five people voted no, which showed me that people were afraid to show their hand. Maybe they were sitting next to somebody that was in favor of it, and they were opposed, but they were afraid of it. And I said, I think the time is is really been reached where we need electronic voting, where you can do a like a secret ballot where you just press a button, yes or no at the town meeting because it showed me just that particular vote, two of them, that people were afraid to show their hand. And so the the that's one of the problems with the town meeting, and I know it's the one of the purest forms of government, goes back to prehistoric times when you were there, Joe, and.
Greece, Greece. Greece, four thousand years ago.
Yeah, okay. But I I think it that it should be at a a ballot vote where people can can sit back and 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 vote, so secret ballot. And in addition, at at the town meeting, we have, we have a lot of people right with this pandemic that still today, and and I haven't seen it twice today, where people are petrified to go out of their house and they they're just afraid of this virus. And I just think that we may not get as many people at the town meeting because they're afraid to go. And sometimes you've got a lot of, you've got a lot of senior citizens. They don't want to be out till eleven o'clock at night if the so they're reluctant to go. So to to get the most people involved in it, I I think a ballot at a town election is the fairest way to do it. Did you you had a rebuttal, Joe?
No, no, I'll save my comments for town meeting.
Okay.
Those are very important points. I respect what you say.
And 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 just to bring it up, when when you say there's no urgency, well, I I think that's the proper way to go. Anybody else?
I actually, the only comment I'd like to say is about the turnout in terms of COVID. I think right now with most people that chose to get vaccinated, being vaccinated, everything opening up is far contrast to the election that Miss Kath Castranellis and myself ran in where we had over seven hundred people turn out to vote because we were in complete lockdown at the time.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Nobody was supposed to leave the house. So I understand we had a low turnout, but that's because the ballot was empty.
Yeah.
And nobody campaigned very hard.
Oh, because you couldn't.
Well, this time here you could, but nobody did because the ballot was empty.
Right.
And I think that's really what drove the, uh, turnout down. So hopefully town meeting, maybe we can get ready to throw up that, uh, highway sign over at town center. And, uh, additional, yeah, the board's already got it on. It's been on there for a while. And, uh, the additional campaigning from all of us to get more people there, I think is, uh, gonna get quite a large turnout in, in contrast to what, uh, you think in terms of COVID.
Anybody else?
Well, do we, do we need to vote for that code red call to be made? Because I would, I would like to see it made on, um, like Friday night and then again on Sunday night, Friday night or Thursday night, just so people get a heads up. Because lots of times if I was on a committee, I might not realize we're having to tell me. So if I get a call on like Thursday night, I'll be like, oh, okay. And I'll circle it and then a reminder of Sunday night. I find nowadays with the amount of email and things that people get, sometimes even the best intentioned people, you tell them once and then you just give them that gentle reminder again, because that's part of good community service. It's part of being supportive of your population and keeping them informed. Um, and I would definitely prioritize the town sign so that literally leading up to that town meeting, um, maybe that's the only thing on it after the plant. I think the plant sale is the twenty second, right? And then tell me is the twenty fourth. So unless there's anything else that's a higher priority, plant sale, town meeting, go.
I, I, I don't think we need to, uh, need to take a vote on, um,
Code Red?
On, on having the code red, having it put on the, uh, sign out here and have a highway.
Thank you.
We can just, uh, Dan.
Yeah, I got, I think I got a postcard today, right?
I don't, I don't know. I didn't get one.
I didn't send it.
Because I saw your name and I didn't send it to you.
I didn't get one.
Did notice this go up?
If you like, I'll, I'll give you.
Oh, you're, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, maybe we could reach out to the Bagnall School.
I thought you would be facetious.
No.
You mailed me a postcard.
Yes.
I was excited. I don't usually get mail.
I mailed it to all twenty nine.
No, everybody dies.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I think we're all set with that. You all said, Joe, you're gonna?
I am. I have your consent to present on your behalf.
Six, six minutes?
Six minutes. You're gonna hold me to it, Dan.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a time. I don't have a watch. I don't have a Swiss watch. So I guess six minute model. I mean, we agree on the rules.
I, I think you brought up some good points. I really, I would, I miss debating with you in public.
Yeah, I mean, it's just for sport, for no other reason, Joe. I like to, you know.
Put them both on the town.
The worst thing that'll happen if this fails, I go back to the public service retirement. So don't worry. This is a temporary, you know, stepping up. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
I appreciate it. Thanks. Thanks.
Bye. So how do y'all look on me?
I will.
We're gonna have to see you guys someday.
All business. Would be probably, uh, town, town meeting articles. I want to make sure we're all set with it.
Can we just for a second discuss the town meeting setup? I just wanted to make sure because I thought that when we voted on it, I thought we voted for us to be on the stage like we used to be. Okay. That's what we vote. No, I remember that. Yeah, we did. Because we had these, all these floor plans in front of us. We voted to be on the stage like we used to be. Because we don't have to do that spacing and I certainly don't want the plastic shield in front of me anymore. I don't feel the need to hide behind a plastic shield. And I don't want to be cut off from the people in the town meeting.
No.
We did vote that. We, we voted to go back to the old way.
Again, I don't think we need to take a vote on that. We just.
Okay, so we go back to the regular.
Okay.
Did you have a comment, Dan?
I like to just put the tables against the wall. I don't like, I, I've never sat on a stage, but it kind of seems like it.
Well, the reason it helps is they can really hear and see the moderator very well across the whole thing. Because, and then, yes, and he can see and recognize people coming up. And also when they're asking us questions,
Yeah.
you can make better eye contact with who's the different people trying to ask the questions. Last year was very difficult, not with just the mask, because we're still gonna be masked, but with um, the, trying to receive people saying, seeing who was trying to get in line, couldn't, visibility was very low. It'll help because the town attorney will be there. If there's a legal question, attorney can see that and switch to the moderator. It just, it works better. I'm not trying to make us look, you know, like we're more important than we are. Um, but it does help with visibility and especially, um, with masking. Um, so my, my question, I thought I asked the board of health, I'm not sure, can, will people be allowed to, when they go to the mic, be allowed to lower their mask to speak? Because I think that if we move the mics back from the seating area, a lot of people struggle trying to speak with a mask on. I know, right? So I think I want to encourage the participation at the town meeting by saying, you know, if you go to the net, Mike, you know, nobody talks for that long. You can take your mask down, say what you're gonna say and then put it back up.
Well, we should have all set for, um, for the sound. Uh, that's all set.
Good.
Um, and with the consensus that the, uh, that the boards and the finance boards sit on the table, on a stage, uh, that, that can be worked out.
Okay.
And we're all set with, uh, a setup. Uh, I think.
Hey, I don't know. Beth wanted all the, um, non-voters on the.
Oh, good point. Non-voters, general. Last year, they were on the right hand side by the, uh, doors to the kitchen area.
They've been on the wall for a few years now in the back.
I've never been. I just.
Oh, okay. Well, they can always be on the stage behind us if they want to. That's fine with me. I don't care.
Well, there was always, uh,
They were putting them on the back.
We, we al- we always had them, uh, on, um, by the windows.
Yeah.
That, that did not work because people coming in.
Dan, no, yeah.
Um, meetings here at some point wants to stand up.
Well, they can view from the stage. I don't mind.
With that again?
They can sit up on the stage. It's a big enough stage.
Along the wall, I think.
Okay, put them on the wall.
And there wasn't that many.
Okay.
Ruth, did you have something?
No, I heard Catherine saying non-resident voters and they're not voters. That's why if they're not residents, they're not voters. And that's why they need to be separated from
Right.
our populations so they can easily know who they are and who they are not.
Yeah. So she said she want, she wanted to put everybody on the, at the wall. Voters and then put the non, non-registered voters on the stage.
Non-voters on the stage?
That's how she had it set up and that was the diagram that was weeks and weeks ago, but I just have to let her know. Okay, thank you.
So have the, have the non-voters behind the, um, the tables on the stage.
If that's, yeah, that's what you want now, that can.
That can be worked out. Uh,
How many people are we setting it up for? How many seats? And are the seats being separated?
Um.
Do we know what the capacity is to that room on?
I think capacity is not going to be an issue right now. I'm not positive, but we can ask the board of health. I, I feel like, um,
I know it's being lifted shortly after, but I'm just curious if there are capacity issues and if it's being set up.
Let me look in my.
That's a good point, Dan.
We got.
That's a question, I mean.
Sure. Let me see if I got anything.
I don't know the weather outlook, but is it possible at the last minute to transition and have it in the parking lot or something? I mean, it's just.
I think then you need to get the sound.
Or outside in the field.
I think it's complicated.
I think there was some logistics.
I wanted, sorry, the sound. But, uh, yeah, I think the sound is set inside or outside. I think the, uh, the issue was the further expense of, uh, the tent for doing it outside. Um, and I think that's one of the, the biggest.
With disabilities would have a difficult time getting out in the field was another.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the problem is the park, like West Newbury, what they do is they use their pot top parking lot part. They don't let people park on a portion of it so the seniors can be there.
Yeah.
And then they have the rest of people on the grass, but, but they have a different park. I think at Bagnall Forest, a parking situation is a little bit difficult. Um, yes.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I mean, if it was out back, uh, on the, uh, grass, I mean, there is a driveway that goes around the building. I mean, is that, would that be sufficient for the handicapped persons to use that? To not have any cars use it? And then have people park in front of the building? I, I've just thrown it out there because I've meaning, you know, if the weather's beautiful like today, I mean, you could have it outside, um, persons with disability would just be on the pavement.
I think this late day, we got a better chance than Medina Spirit running in the Belmont Stakes this week.
Just don't change gears.
Don't change horses.
Yeah.
Well, how are you gonna do this at this point?
I, I don't know.
Logistically, it's a nightmare with.
I don't know if it's as simple as setting up full of chairs and setting up the mic. I mean, I'm oversimplifying that.
Six days.
Well, we also gonna use, uh, the auxiliary room if needed. If the capacity.
It would be the gym.
In, in the other, in the gym. Uh, that, that was used last year. It seemed to work out very good.
It was used two years ago. We did the, the high school. Because there were, I forget how many, four hundred, I think people showed up so they had to. So you could stick another fifty. Well, it depends. If people come with their family, you don't have to be segregated. So right then and there, you don't need the six feet separation if the husband and wife come with the the, the, the son and the daughter, right? So there's three there. This, and you see a lot of husband and wives come, so there's no need to segregate them six feet. So I, I don't see it being a real issue. And by the numbers, New England is so far ahead of the rest of the country as far as getting vaccinated. Even in Massachusetts with kicking butt. So I know you can't ask people to get vaccinated or if they have been, but the numbers sure are strong.
And I don't believe that when we use the gym area as, as an overflow, I, I, I don't believe we set up any chairs in there. I think we just used the bleachers.
No, we did.
We did set up chairs?
We knew that there would be a huge crowd because the, the school was gonna bring out a lot of people. So we took, um, we anticipated, we set up a podium and a mic on that side and set up chairs as well. I know Denise did. I was down there and I believe, uh, Chief and, uh, Jim Day were also instrumental in getting those both rooms set up.
Okay. All right. So it sounds like we're all set. Anybody else have good, other questions? Okay.
Well, it sounds like the quorum reductions are still in place, but there doesn't seem to be. I'm reading Lakeville, Massachusetts, May twenty twenty one. It seems like we could start our special town meeting with less than a hundred people, which is kind of a good thing. Um, so maybe we should check with town council like we did last year to see if, if we need to do anything or vote anything, but.
Well, he'll be there at our special meeting. Uh, we'll, we'll make contact with him.
Okay. So, um, Ruth and I were gonna go over things again that we, you know, we're gonna power off for a few minutes after this, right? Or not? She's like done. So I'm so done with this. So, but, um, the, the thing that I, we could definitely like fix any subtitles that don't look right so that when we read out and then change it as people vote. So that'll be easy.
Uh, just as a point of reminder that, uh, any, um, um, motions to amend must be in writing.
Yes.
Hand it to the court.
Yes, I do. So we might want to write, um, if we're allowed to bring in any of these transfers of revenue to the front of the omnibus. It doesn't sound like we're gonna be allowed to, um, do that. And I, I also, um, think we may not be allowed to do the article on, um, the sick leave buyback because there's no dollar amount in it. So people aren't forewarned, but everything else seems to be okay, I think. On this article twenty one is rather complex. Um, town council might, you might want to have him explain it. I asked him to explain it to me. Um, and, uh, I think that that we need to probably pay for the, um, police cruiser and the van out of free cash, not reasonably appropriate, just to keep, keep the budget within bounds. It's been chased that, that two hundred and fifty dollars. Sounds like that two hundred and fifty thousand is still. It's still on the fence, right? We had, has it been finally decided?
It's gone.
But they haven't finished the whole budget. There's still hope, right? It goes from governor to house.
Gone.
It's.
It's gone.
But how come?
G O N E. Bye-bye. Don't, there's no more discussion of that because it doesn't exist anymore. Greg has reached out, uh, to us as well as the other two towns in the school committee.
That's a lot.
What are we talking about, Mr.?
Yeah.
There was an E S S R two grant with two hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars that, um, the school district was going to use to lower our assessment. It passed the House when it got to the Senate because the big cities rule over the small communities like us. The Senate put the kibosh on it. So we lost the two fifty nine one one.
This is news to me. I didn't know it had gone all the way through everything.
Oh, yes.
So it was voted on in the Senate, it failed.
It was voted on in the House and failed in the Senate.
Gotcha.
So.
So it was voted on the Senate.
Yeah. So they took it, they took it out. And now Greg is, is realized it's not gonna happen. He realizes that all of us, and most of the towns in Massachusetts had already finalized their budgets with these numbers in. And at the last minute, it was yanked out off the table from us. Uh, but he has agreed to meet with us, the other two towns, as well as the school committee to find a reasonable solution to the, to the problem that we find ourselves in currently. I don't know what that solution is gonna be. Uh, but he seemed very willing to do as much as possible to remedy the situation for us going forward.
Well, the only reduction was to Grohl and to Merrimack. So the question is, are they gonna take it away? They already voted it. They sent it to us. That's what we put on our warrant. That's what West Newbury put on their warrant. Their warrant's pretty set. Merrimack and Grohl one.
But it's not there.
Good question. So, uh, is the school committee stuck with, is the school committee stuck with their budget?
I think so.
Uh, no, not, the way Greg, Mr. LeBrec said, not necessarily. They have, they have some. Listen, all I can tell you is what I know. And, and right now we're all shaking our heads because this was pulled out. This was a rug pulled out from us at the last minute.
Charlie Brown football.
It, it, the Lucy. Yeah. This is the Lucy football that the House put up and the Senate took away. And most of it, talking with Greg, was because the big cities, Rockton, Springfield, Boston, you know, they are both small communities like us. They have more representation.
But there's been no vote of the school committee yet. They're gonna talk to us first.
The, the budget's been done, but they're gonna talk to us as well as, you know, the school district to find a way to somehow, um, you know, correct the situation, but there's no guarantees in anything. It, it just, it's, it's, it's an attempt to see what we can do about it. That's what it is. That's.
We're gonna vote the budget the way it is in the warrant for now.
Uh, go ahead, Dan. Questions?
Well, one was, how, uh, you know, how did, uh, our rep, uh, boost up that he wrote for? I guess, you know?
I do not know. I, I believe he voted for it um, in conversations that, uh, I had with former chairman Wood, who was in constant contact with him. He was amazed and completely befuddled by this, the elimination of these E S S R grants.
So is there someone from the district or somebody, some point guy that could call, contact his office if there's any way to revive this people accounting on it? I mean, it was a count chickens, you know, and counting your birthday money before your birthday type of thing. And it's kind of on us or on the district. I don't know.
Uh, I'm sure they have. I know Mike Wood was very, uh, adamant about this. I know, uh, the folks at the, the school district were very upset about this because they had made their budgets as well. Um, we know, if factoring this in, um,
This is a pretty strong letter here. It says you're, you know,
Yep.
Your town will have, you know.
It says the governor's allowed it. So why isn't the governor?
Yeah, lowered by two fifty nine eleven, making you this. It seems, this doesn't seem contingent on anyone, does it?
No.
Am I messing something?
He didn't say that.
Bill, can you, uh, talk with Greg LeBrec and, uh, so for them?
Sounds like he already did.
Proceed with that. And also, when did you want to meet with him? Well, we, we had a week.
He sent, uh, he sent me an email, um, during the time I was acting chair to ask of our interest.
You want a copy of them?
In meeting with the two other towns, as well as the school committee. To which I immediately responded, absolutely let us know when we will be there. And I have not heard from him since. So I can ring this bell tomorrow and say. Have you made any progress in pulling this together? We're actively seeking some kind of advice. And some direction on where we go and what we do. So if you want me to do that, I can do that fine tomorrow.
I think that would be a good idea, Daniel. Yeah, I I said, I I think we need some like liaison to go find out what's going on. I mean. You rely on this. It's it's it doesn't appear to be conditional unless there's another piece of this that I'm missing, but.
Reaching to the choir, my friend.
So how can they come back? I mean, we're voting on Monday on our budget. Then what? They're gonna come back and do a do-over?
So.
You you know?
Go, Dan, go to Beacon Hill. I I don't know. It's not, it's not the school took it away. It Beacon Hill took it away from them.
Yeah, but if the school knew that it was subject to legislative approval and the governor signed it, then you just, it can't be a, you know, you. You know, it shouldn't be conditional. It's a what if, you know? You can't, you can't budget on a what if. We might get rail trail money someday, you know? I mean, you can't start spending.
This was, this was, I mean, this came up during some of the budget meetings. And the former into in a finance director thought that we were gonna get a check. And I informed him, Mr. Lebrecht is not gonna send you a check, trust me. And in that, during that time, Mr. Lebrecht actually texted. A former Fennies director and said, no, you're not getting a check. We're just going to lower your assessment. But at that time, he believed that it was gonna pass through the Senate. It didn't.
Somebody thought it was a slam dunk.
A lot of people thought it was a slam dunk, Dan. Every community out there in Massachusetts. Use that money to balance their budgets. We're all in the same boat.
As expected to. So.
A lot of us.
One of the things.
On behalf of the finance board, do you have a comment? Or not? No. Okay.
Um, I would say that what this is, is not um an increase in our students. This is a ru- a reallocation of the minimum required contribution that the Department of Education did during a pandemic. And the last time they did this, um, it took us a few months, but um gentleman John Susie and I sat down and we kinda pulled it apart. And we went up to the Department of Education. We asked our questions, but how they came up with our number, because we couldn't figure it out. Well, they never answered our question, but they lowered our minimum contribution because we made the noise. Because make the noise is what I.
That's my suggestion is somebody.
Not not if in fact it, they don't change it. The department, the ask, there's online, you can start, we could tear apart the formula. Because.
We've talked about that and we plan to do that.
It's just gonna take us time.
Year, but right now.
The next few months. It's gonna take a couple months.
So if we relied on information, I wanna know what that information was to prepare the budget, they can't change it.
We gotta rely on an assessment letter like we always get. Yeah, this was voted by the school committee. That's how we do it.
Bill's gonna check on that and um you'll 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 check on that. And when you get the answer, you're gonna email the members of the board. So.
I will email Catherine. If I email the members of the board, I'm, uh, I don't wanna violate any open meeting laws, so I think I will communicate with Catherine. Catherine can disseminate this information to all of you and then uh that's how we communicate.
Okay. Uh, anything else on the town uh meeting articles? We we did the setup. We uh. Town meeting articles, we're all set with that.
Are we getting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars again from the cable company? You think, yeah?
Well, uh.
We are.
At last I understood, we had voted on that particular option. Uh, but town council, I don't know if they had. Uh, finally executed that contract with Comcast, so we'd have to check with them because that ball has been in their court. Um, but they did give us the three options and we voted on 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 the one.
Okay, and then.
We can check with the.
I thought that when we voted the um new stabilization thing for the firefight E M T salaries. We voted to create the account, but we're not gonna fund it.
We created, we voted to create a revolving account. So it's like we did with the Groveland summer program, the Groveland Day Committee, the Pines, but. We would not fund it yet.
It's a new stabilization fund. Okay, so we don't need the funding language at the end.
There's no funds to put in, we just wanna create.
Okay, so that's, then that's fine.
Because looking forward, we know we do have to fund those positions. Two years from now.
Okay. And and the other question I got from a resident, but I guess um. I think I asked. Bill Hewitt, the are, the borrowing for the water and sewer, it doesn't say that it's gonna be paid by water and sewer revenues. But I, the enterprise fund, but I guess that just happens or that's the way it goes. Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm kind of understanding. I was just a little concerned. Someone called me and said, why are we paying taxes for the water main pipes? And I said, no, I don't think they're gonna be paid for.
That'll be taken care of at the town meeting. Uh, Colin spoke with us today about that.
Oh, okay. So he has it under control? Very good.
He will make a adjustment to it, is he going?
Yeah, it's coming out of the enterprise fund.
Okay, so they'll change that for us. That's wonderful. Okay, I think. Um, there are like a couple of the little number things, but we can get those all on one piece of paper and maybe give them to the moderator. Other than that, no, I think I think it's, except we don't have the money excepting from the electric department and the overlay surplus. Fifty thousand.
I think we have the overlay.
No, we have the letter, but it's not, there's no article here to take. So wait to see, you know, maybe the tax, maybe it could get put on the tax recap as a receipt. I don't know. Ask the question. We always used to put it on the articles, but we've been doing the same thing for, you know, thirty, fifty years. So maybe, maybe we don't have to. I don't know. But I'll ask the attorney.
Okay, we're all set on, we're all set on town meeting articles, I believe. Any question, any further questions on the town meeting articles? None.
No.
Next, uh, we do, we just got a few things here. Uh. Uh, trash contract. Bill, I I I know that you and the former chairman were working on the trash contract as far as uh, we got till June thirtieth. Uh, and uh, did you have any update with him or what? You you two were gonna work on it and. Uh, basically like make a decision. Uh, I, I, a conversation with Kevin or an email with him is that uh. Uh, you two were working on it and we're gonna present uh something back to the board. Uh, have you heard anything on that?
The trash contract.
Trash contract.
Trash. W uh Waste Management.
Yeah.
Okay, that's totally incorrect, because I think we had a big Zoom meeting. We were all on the call and we negotiated um with. Mister Boyer of Waste Management to flip-flop. To not charge the seven percent across the board. So I don't remember where the former. Uh, chairman, I were delegated this sole responsibility. I thought they were coming back with a proposal, which they did. And then we were gonna look at it and vote on it as a vote like we did during the Zoom call and we negotiated. That reduction of terms and the spread out of of his trying to get back um.
Recover.
Some of the losses that he had during the first five years.
He had sent an email um. From Waste Management that uh they were, they were waiting for something from us.
Yeah, they're waiting for us to decide on his next, on his latest proposal.
So you need to put on the agenda.
Jason?
Yeah, I think uh, I think what confused it a little bit was you had suggested putting out to bid.
Well, absolutely.
But I think uh now time is of the essence because um. The attorney needs to have that for a minimum of three weeks. I think we only have four weeks.
Okay.
So I don't think we have the option of being able to put it out to bid.
There's no procurement officer.
Yeah. We could, we could fix that.
Actually are the. Officers, so we should have sent that out.
But uh, and the other, the other thing is, I think, I think. For this contract, I think it was. Uh, feasible, but I think next time coming around, since we shifted the big increase from the beginning to the end.
To the end.
It's gonna be when we really need to focus on getting that out there.
An hour fee, sure.
So should we put that on our agenda for the, before town meeting to just vote on that proposal?
I think so.
I looked it over. I, I mean, I know more about trash now than I ever wanted to know. I really do.
That's that's something that shouldn't take too long. You wanna, you wanna put that on the agenda for uh our meeting just before.
Yes, please. Yes, that'd be great.
Yeah, he's always, I mean, they went from seven, 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 seven. We've got a three, four, five, six, seven.
I think that's doable.
It's better than what we had. And we did that on our own in half hour. Was it forty-five minutes?
I now know what single stream means.
Yeah.
Um, go figure.
The uh. Uh, the other, the what, uh, what are we doing about the uh carpet contract?
I don't know anything about it.
It's um, well, uh, uh, maybe Catherine can enlighten us. Uh, the, that went out the bid or uh. And 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 a company was selected. And where 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 do we, where do we stand on that?
And they just need to go ahead.
They just need to go ahead? Okay, and uh.
How many buildings are we doing?
The library and town hall.
Okay, that should be pretty simple.
So do we know which one was selected and why?
Um.
It was on the state bid list.
Oh.
Well.
So you can just grab.
Sorry, I don't need to.
No, go ahead.
So.
Oh, you mean which carpet or which company?
Yeah, which company. So I I, in this meeting, in this room, I was doing work months ago. And looking at all of these samples and Steve came in and I just had a conversation with him and said, oh, these are the samples that Steve got. I asked, you know, which he was looking at. He said he got three bids, two were in Groveland, one was not. The lower one that was not from Groveland was remarkably lower, to the point. He almost had concern as to if that was going to change or not. And, you know, so my opinion was. If we have a bid that's from Groveland, that looks like a valid bid, you know, we should explore.
If it's on the state bid list.
We couldn't because.
They weren't paying prevailing wage.
They must pay prevailing wage.
But I I need to understand the role of this twenty-five hundred dollar project manager.
There there shouldn't be one.
My understanding is, is a former interim finance director hired a project manager to do this? Is that correct?
Yep.
Do we have a contract and we, do we know how much it's costing? I've heard it's twenty-five hundred dollars for this project manager. Do we have a contract from this project manager?
I've seen one.
Can we see it? So we know exactly what we're paying for?
Hmm.
Cause I I don't feel comfortable going ahead with this until I know what I'm getting. And right now, I don't know what I'm getting.
Well, the thing is that we also had the building inspector. I'm looking for his email. I I caught a glimpse of, I've gotten so many emails recently. Glimpse of an email exchange between Sam, our building inspector, who was going to oversee it, just as part of his general function.
Oh, yes.
And he was told not to do that by um. And I'm thinking, I feel like we were moving Sam towards that, like Steve takes care of the buildings. He's a good um fix-it and caretaker. And then. We, I thought had, were trying to move Sam into a little bit of oversight of all the town buildings because of his knowledge base. I thought, am I misunderstanding something?
No.
I know we didn't change his job description and we need to do that. Um, we should do that. But I I thought where he's already on payroll, it doesn't cost us twenty-five hundred dollars to have Sam oversee it. Why wouldn't we do that? He's very knowledgeable.
Ruth?
That was exactly when we were going through the budget and I know Sam's um. Job description changed this year along with his compensation and it was to accommodate facilities management. And I just wanted to go back and have a conversation to make sure that that made sense to me before I. Um, backed that up in the budget and recommended that in the budget. And so in my conversation with Sam, I said exactly that. For instance, the carpet pieces that I see, it's just funny that that was my exact conversation. The carpet pieces I see, that is something that you would work with Steve on. And he said, oh, absolutely. And he explained to me that this was. What he's done in other towns as well and that this is his expertise. And as far as I can see. He's the building inspector. It makes the most sense for him to be working on buildings. In the building maintenance and the building improvements. And he's on our salary and that's exactly what we adjusted his compensation for. To think we're hiring somebody else to manage a project like that astounds me personally.
So is it too late to to change, change this or, you know, cause Sam is. Sam didn't want, I guess, getting into the middle of anything they didn't understand. We. We should have changed his job description, you know, so that's on our, on our shoulders, that we didn't do that. We knew we needed to. And I think there's something else with the permitting software that he's doing now and that would need to be in his job description because.
So it's been verbal, but not in writing?
Correct, yeah.
How difficult is it if do? How difficult is it? You you hire a carpet company and they come in and put the carpet in. And uh.
It must be real difficult because we had to hire a project manager to do it.
I did it to my office, sure.
Did you manage the project?
Um, I did, I called.
What, what?
Empire dot com.
Well, we can, we have a contract. Would that be a breach of contract?
I don't know. We didn't sign a contract.
We haven't seen.
I, I, we haven't seen the contract. We don't know what it breached because we don't know what what we, what we paid for, what we, what we allegedly contracted for. Uh, with the terms of the agreement are, what the 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 scope of work uh i- i- is for. Um, you know, I'm running blind here, because I've got nothing.
I think we need to see the contract. And I think I'd like to know if there's any other such agreements or contracts.
That we don't know about.
Play or in the works because. You know, I just feel that. We work so hard to make sure that the budget is in check and it's fair and.
We've gotten uh unknown liabilities possibly walking around.
Unknown and upsetting. And not transparent.
Catherine, when when can we get that?
I just requested it. I just requested a copy of it from the contractor.
All right. Um.
Didn't, we don't have a copy in here. Who signed it? Who signed?
It was all taken care of by Kevin.
So he signed the contract, but we don't, he doesn't have a copy here.
Well, we don't know.
That could be.
He didn't feel the need to share it with us.
There could be one in his office. I don't know.
Um. So uh. But uh, we put that off to Monday uh. When the carpet contract, when we get the answer by then, that shouldn't take too long either.
No.
I would hope so, that we pump the brakes on this right now, just to make sure we know what we're getting into.
We gotta, we gotta get, yeah, and we gotta get that done. Uh, you did, you only got thirty days. After the town meeting, really, to uh to get this thing in before it's always come out of the.
It's not that much carpet, right? It's the middle room and this room. Is is there any other offices? All the auto offices?
Eleven offices, the big room.
I don't think we have enough money in there to do all of it.
Um, good. So.
They should have engaged to do it.
Well, I think we're gonna be done over a two-year period time.
Well.
Uh, so we'll deal, we'll deal with that. Uh, we'll, we'll, we should be able to get the answer by uh. Next, let's go on Monday.
We have seventy-five thousand dollars set aside for for repairs to the town buildings. So I thought. The only thing I know of is a, whatever that thing is that broke in the police department.
Boiler?
Yeah, that thing. A small expense, I'm sure.
The fountains.
Okay, and the fountains.
Which I don't believe has happened at the police station.
No, but is that, isn't that COVID money? Cause it's touchless or is that not?
Don't think so.
Okay, well, that's fine. We'll do that.
We have to check that, but I thought we, that was COVID money because it's touchless.
Think COVID. We're gonna miss.
Municipal buildings last year was a hundred thousand.
So the Board of Health did vote to open the town building with these restrictions. They did their vote tonight, so that's, that's what we wanted from them, right?
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
We'll get to that. We were on a, I thought we were on the carpet. So we'll, we'll take care of that.
Can I ask one more question about the carpet before?
Well, why not? You're gonna clean it.
No, no. So we had a hundred thousand allocated last year from, from free cash to municipal building. So I think we should also ask the accountant what's left in that line. At this point in time, as we also go into the carpet. We should know that. To make sure that we have enough money in that budget line as we make sure that um.
Okay, we can, we can have that, we can have that by Monday.
That should be part of it with the contract, as we make sure we can try to get this done in the next thirty days. We wanna make sure there's the money for it too.
Absolutely. Well, we can get that. Um. The uh. Oh, we voted on a stipend for the interim interim uh council on aging.
Yeah.
Uh, director. But we we don't know where the money's coming from.
From whatever salary is. Oh, we need to transfer. Is that what you mean? Do we need to transfer? Okay, so we have this, this is what you were talking about. We have this from Ellen. With all the accounts and the money that's left. And we put two on this, of these as special articles. So then these, we just asked her to update this for us.
Yeah, do you have a question, Jason?
Tells us what's available and what's.
Didn't we do that last meeting? Yeah, we didn't do so.
It was the vote was left contingent.
Okay, did you on available funds? You're right. Yep. So we would have to find the contingent available funds, so.
They just ask because they meet tomorrow morning. Council on Aging.
Oh, okay.
So last I looked, there was funds in the council on aging in their van line.
That's right.
Subvision funds that they've only used. One or two thousand dollars. Ellen would have to confirm that, but there was money in the van.
So that that's something that could be brought up in another special town meeting on a on some transfers.
Doesn't need to be special town meeting. We can do. We can do that as an internal transfer. We'll take care of. We we can do that within the.
Right, so the the Board of Selectment and the Financial Board, Ellen can present us with the list of the transfers that need to be done. To balance out the budget and we just can vote them one at a time. The only ones we cannot vote, which were put on the. Lawn are the ones that come out of a a school assessment. We're not allowed to move that money. But all these other lines that she's tracking. We can shift the money. So she has a, this is not mine. This is Ellen's. So she has the the current expected overages or unders and when she has availability, we just.
All right, so she'll try. We'll 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 get her. She'll she'll tell us where it's gonna come from.
Especially from council on aging to council on aging.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not a problem.
All right.
And they have funds for that.
That's all set. And then, Catherine, you had um a board of health.
So, yes, they vote. They voted to um open the town hall. On, I think, I guess it says June first. And it's going to have your masks are going to be required to enter the town hall. We don't know how long that will be. Um, we're going to continue with the COVID cleaning and sanitizing process. Posting capacity limits at each office. Call for an appointment before entering the town hall. Limit the number of people inside the town hall. And that's all from Rosemary. That did. Do you know how to pronounce her last name? Dacey? Dacey? Dacey, health agent. So this has been voted and so town hall is now gonna open the doors.
June first.
Yep.
FYI is the Tuesday after Memorial Day weekend, so Monday is a holiday.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
The Tuesday. Any comments? Bill, on the water health tentative opening of town hall on June first, don't be. No. Jason?
No, I I I like that they did the work and presented it in the manner that it is. Uh, Dan?
I'd like to open the day of uh, I'd like to open Monday. So is it their decision? I mean, I thought we voted on it last time and.
Well, we asked them.
It failed, but I mean, is it their jurisdiction and their authority? I question that. I question their authority. I'd like it to be open yesterday. So that's my two cents. I don't know if I can do anything about it, but.
Yeah, I'd like to work with them on this one. Let them let them participate.
I don't really want to work against anyone, but I did go back to asking today and everybody was buying food. So, I mean, people go about their business. Should have been opened a long time ago. Kids should have been back in school a long time ago. Can't unring the bell on that. Don't have a time capsule, but we can open from Monday, so I'm in the minority.
Well, it it's pointed out to me today, Market Basket stopped sanitizing the carriages when you walk in the door. Yeah, they did. And Market Basket uh got rid of the one-way arrows in the aisle, which which didn't work.
I like the wiping of the basket. I'm like.
I always went down the aisle the wrong way just in protest.
Of course you do.
Civil disobedience, you know?
So I took a stab too. I know it's premature because we're gonna go to town many, but I tried to draft what could be a posting for a time administrator. Over then we would need to decide on um.
I I thought we were still on.
Oh, oh, sorry. I thought you were done. I'm sorry. I thought you were done. I moved quickly.
No, um. Yeah, I I don't have any more comments. What what did you have there?
Oh, well, I thought, you know, because we need to post a town administrator supposedly if everything passes, I'm willing to wait. Um, we should start to think about what is it going to take to post the job? So we will need like a posting notice, right, that goes on my municipal site. So I kind of stole from another town if you wanted to just. Look at the draft and I only have three copies. Because my husband yells at me for using up all the printer ink. It's a sore subject in our house. Although this year I'm totally digital on the at school, so I'm not printing any.
One man. I think that's supposed to be mass.
Mass, thank you. Yeah, I did it fast. I was just kind of stealing. I don't. I won't take credit for making it up all from fresh. I steal. I always. I always look to see what other people have done before me and then stay take what I like. And um, but we would need to be filling in like. Um, the job description, if this is the pass. And we should have both both job descriptions ready, right? Because we'll have to tell me we're gonna post something, right? Am I right or wrong, right? Yes.
I don't know anymore.
Well, I would think we should have both of those job descriptions prepped and ready with a with a posting for both ways. So that we don't sit there for another month not posting things, right?
So that's my. Agreed to post the treasurer collector and the town administrator already.
I'm not. This isn't really ready because I don't have the links that should go on it like to the job description and to.
I was just. Treasurer collector was.
Just treasurer.
Yeah, that one's more ready. That's probably more ready to go. This one I would need um some help to get fill in those link things, right?
Uh, I I would like to uh on this town administrator, if you if you posted, I'd I'd like to add add something to it.
Oh, of course. No, this is just a draft. It needs more to it for sure.
Something to the effect that uh the the candidate, uh after they get the job. Within six months will move to the to the town of Groveland, not surrounding community to the town of Groveland. I think that that would be, I think that that would be a benefit where uh they're they're living in the town and they're serving the town. And and other um, other municipalities require that, e- even if you stretch it out to a year. The person, I think, should live in the town of Groveland. Uh, they, I think the town would be better served by that.
I guess I'm thinking more like, what did we put into Rennie's um contract? We did something about how far away he could live.
Because I remember the.
Yeah, I'd like to be consistent. We said something in this highway um superintendent's. Con- contract and posting that we wanted them within a certain amount of time. And I I I understand where you're coming from and I would love them to be in our town. I would love that. But I I would just most of all not like them to be like two hours away. So that we start dealing with people who want to do remote and remote. I want them to be invested in the town and be here on site.
And and how do they become invested? They live here.
Well, that is a nice way.
Pay taxes here.
But if you see the housing prices in our town right now, the housing prices in our town, they're going through the ceiling. It's amazing. I mean, they just.
They have a better feel that that that's different than some of the department heads because this is the uh. This is the one that's 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 been around the whole show. Uh, and I think it'd be better, my personal opinion, I think it'd be better if the person. Lived in the town of Groveland.
Well, I guess if you can find some other towns that have a contract that say it, I'd like to see that. I kind of want to go with something that allows us the biggest pool of people. That would reasonably be good for us. You know, I want to I want to have some. I want to have choices here. Um, I don't want to have just one man standing or one woman standing kind of thing. Seems like when.
Wouldn't want to limit those choices, but those type of restrictions.
Very restrictive.
The uh, most of the fire departments that used to have that requirement um have expanded it. Not too far because it is like Rennie's position where it's emergency situation. She has to get here quickly. Where that's not necessarily the case for a town administrator. Yeah, they've they've branched out. It's no longer in the town. It's within so many miles of the town. The police the same way.
Yeah, so many miles.
And it's because of the uh, the limited uh resources, the pool of resource. So I think uh, I think that would really limit it.
Yeah, I didn't know if the posting should say that it's our first town administrator. That would be something that would get people excited or get people running the other way. So I didn't put it in. Okay, so I'm hoping, you know, I kind of, like I said, I stole from another town's posting. I just, and then I stole from our. Put our page with Groveland on it. What about us? I thought about putting in things about the beautiful river and the museum park, but then I just stopped. Yeah, I didn't want to get carried away.
That that would skip people away.
So I just left it kind of like that.
Okay. Um, anything else under uh old business? Phil, you had something?
Yes, um. To Jason's point, I think he was just talking about it. I could have sworn we voted five zip. To post the treasurer collectors uh position last week. So could you explain where you got the veto power to put that on pause? Or did I miss a meeting where we voted to put that posting on pause?
I haven't seen it yet. We we haven't seen it. We haven't seen the uh the posting.
It was, can I try to? I think it was contingent upon getting this. I asked you, I think it was uh.
Me?
Uh, Miss Cash.
Yeah. Go for it. Just keep talking.
All right, I just keep talking. I wanted to clarify that it was a standard state like generic. This is what the job is statutorily or something. And I think you were.
I I have documented.
It's from the state.
Yep, it is.
Guidelines, right?
Yes, and we already had.
So I guess we're gonna see it. I mean, it's just.
Well, just just like you mentioned before, on the copper contract, how can you vote on something that you haven't seen?
So just want to.
We haven't seen this either. So we, how can we do it? Oh, I'm sorry, Dan, go ahead.
We we should read it because we may have the authority to modify it if it's not what we want. So I don't want to vote. I just think it's a simple matter. We could get a copy of it for Monday and then we can look at it and we've all read it on our homework and we're not.
Well, do you want to see the posting notice? Because Catherine, I think you have the.
See the job description, you know, because I might read it and say.
Right.
Well, the state description doesn't make sense. I mean, something might something might jump out at me.
Yep.
So I don't want any surprises. I don't like getting, you know, and I don't want any bullmarrings that we have to do at all.
We we the the posting is is already been written.
Okay, so why can't we get a copy of it? That's all. It's just like the contract, the small contract, the carpet contract, any contract.
Ask for a copy, but I don't understand after a five-nothing vote, why the chairman unilaterally put it on pause.
Because we haven't seen it.
We wanted to see.
We want to see it.
Then then that should have been brought up in another meeting saying, you know what? We didn't see it. Um, and I need to have a vote on it. The chair should not decide unilaterally against the five-nothing vote of the board. To post the meeting.
Well, to use to use your words, then why don't we just go go along with the carpet contract? Why do you want to see that? It's already been. It's already been voted on. It's already been.
Who voted on the carpet contract?
The con- well, wrong choice of word. It was awarded. The contract was awarded. So why do you want to see it? Don't you want to see what's in it?
Why did you vote for it? You voted five-nothing. All five of us voted. You didn't want to see it last week. Nobody seemed to want to see it last week. When we voted unanimously to post the job.
Bill, Bill, Bill. I I would like to see the contract. The the your posting before it gets put. Dan, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to reconsider. We'd like to read it before it's posted. How about that? I saw. Yes, you're right, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'd like to read it. I mean, I think it's a responsible thing to do so I don't make a mistake. So I make a motion to, let's get a copy of it. All of us could say that we read it. We understand it. It's right for this town. And then it could be, this could all happen uh Monday at the town meeting.
So Catherine's gonna give us all.
Motion on the floor.
You know, one second.
Motion on the floor to reconsider um the posting of the uh. Con of the uh treasurer collector until we get a chance to look at it. Uh, I'll I'll second that. Uh, any further discussion on?
Yes, I have further discussion. We already voted on it. It should be posted. Um, five to nothing. You can look at it anytime you want. You can go to the posting and view it yourself. If you come up with something that shouldn't be there, it needs to change, that's fine, but it's already been voted. And the fact that you wrote the vote of the five members that moved it, I think is an overstep of the chair's position.
Okay, and I think it's uh, okay, so we have we have a motion on the floor. Any other comments? Go ahead.
It's just an oversight. I mean, yeah, hindsight's twenty twenty, but you know. But yeah, I think I it it's like you're back on it. We voted five and the, like I asked a question along the lines of uh. Is it flexible? And I think.
It is.
They may ask that, right?
It can be flexible.
So we're not locked in. It's not an offer to contract. We're not stuck with the description. We could modify it.
We can definitely modify.
So even if it was hypothetically wrong for some reason, uh, we're not stuck with it.
Correct.
Is that still true?
True. Yeah, we've already posted it once and then pulled it down. I mean, it's like, it's like a yo-yo.
Can I get a copy?
And we're not under obligation to hire anybody that puts in a resume, right?
Yeah.
Uh, Jason, go ahead. And then the other flip side of that is if the town decides to stay with the finance director. Chances are, we're going to be hiring a a treasurer collector in the finance finance director's position. Because as I understand it, there's only seven cities that still have a finance director.
I know.
So there's not a lot of people that are going to be applying that are a finance director. And the towns that are hiring now for treasurer collector are saying treasurer collector slash finance director.
I saw this.
And we're missing out on what there was last Monday that we voted on it. A whole week of collecting uh resumes and getting prepared for this. So I think it's something that needs to be posted right away.
I respectfully request that job posting be posted again.
The motion on the floor, the motion on the floor to reconsider. Any further discussion on that? Uh, all in favor of reconsidering?
Was that motion seconded?
All in favor of uh reconsidering? All opposed to reconsidering? Uh, three to two do not reconsider.
I'd like to make a motion now that the job posting that was discussed and voted upon last week be immediately posted.
I'll second that.
I don't think we need to vote. We already voted.
Well, I think we need to vote again because it was the the wishes of the board were not adhered to the last time.
Be our contact for their receipt of the um resumes or what? Administrative coordinator going to receive the resumes and forward them to the board? Yes, that would make more sense right now with our current skeleton crew. I mean, we've got like like. Two, one person there, one. We need to hire. We need to hire.
Yes, yes.
We do. We do.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Um, any further discussion? I don't think it's necessary. It's already um discussion. I it's already on the, it's already been voted, so why why do you need a second vote? We just posted uh, it'll be posted probably tomorrow.
Okay.
But then it now will be because I made a motion to to post it immediately. So now there's a vote and 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 a motion and.
Bill, I'll run the meeting.
It's not very effectively lately.
There's a motion on the floor to uh, and a second, uh, any further discussion on it to uh, post it immediately. Uh, none? All in favor of posting it immediately? Uh, motion carries unanimously. Uh, anything else under uh old business? Nothing? Selectmen's time and reports. Uh, Bill, you have anything?
None at this time.
Kathy?
Um, I received an email regarding that um accident with the school bus. I think I can't root. Look it up. It might have been from either a person or the parent involved. And I guess um myself personally, as a selectman. I went by that road and I wondered um. Whether or not that bus should be going down the road and turning around, picking the children up on the side street instead of in Salem Street. Because that is really close proximity to a lot of the construction there. And Salem Street is a really busy street and. Um, I was going to myself personally just write a letter um either to Jim Day or to the superintendent and say that, you know, when this happens. We jokingly said, well, what would West Newbury do? Well, that's bus would be going down the side street in West Newbury like that, right? You betcha. So, yeah, I think that uh our town's children deserve to be picked up in a in a safe and orderly manner. And I don't consider Salem Street when they live on a side street that they have to go out to a busy street. To stand there around them being picked up on their side street, which is much safer. So those are just my feelings. I've been the parent of kids and buses and things for.
So those are just my feelings. I've been the parent of kids and buses and things for years, so. I totally, um, felt for this, this parent and child with that near accident and, um. I felt like I should say something. I didn't know if anybody else felt the same way. Now is it?
Um, Jason, oh.
Can I make one comment regarding that? I'd also like to give great credit to the Groveland Police Department for finding that person who took off from that accident.
Huge goodness.
If they did a great job.
In hours.
And they also, there was also a separate incident last week, somebody driving recklessly on my street. And they got that person and took charge of that too. So I'm just really proud of our police department. I think they're the greatest. And I think they deserve a lot of credit.
Uh, Jason, anything on the selectmen's time? No, I'm good. I think, I don't have anything, Dan.
Two things, um, can I get a copy of the, uh, outstanding taxes?
Um, yeah, I have it somewhere.
And, um. As I know on the board, people think I have magical powers and, uh. I do. No, I don't. Um, people have asked me, you know, or suggested, Dan, if you could solve the. Rusty, dirty water problem in town, you know?
Well, isn't that why they're replacing those mains there?
Well, is it just the mains are in all the side streets and everything? So is that a resolved issue? And again, if I'm late to the party, forgive me, but is that, is, is what they're doing gonna solve the dirty water problem in town?
Jason, you had a comment on that?
So, you know, I don't know if, you know.
Yeah.
If, if, if that does, it's certainly gonna put it down.
You had an answer to that? Yes, I don't know if it's gonna put a huge dent in it.
Yeah.
Um, the biggest issue is it's well water. And from my experience in looking at other towns that are on well water. It's a hazard of having well water until you get a water treatment plant. And I know that I believe the water department has been looking at grants to get a water feasibility study done. In terms of getting a, uh, uh, water treatment plant.
They got a grant this year.
Yeah, so, so they're working on it. Unfortunately, when you're, uh, in, uh, the government situation, it's like turning a freight liner. And hopefully we can keep it out of the canal and we don't have to. Dig it out, but, uh, yeah, as far as I know.
It's lots of pipes. It's the source of the water and the filtration.
Combination of all.
I heard it's within those old pipes, so there's a lot of.
It's some, but.
The water has magnesium.
But see, I'm up on a hill. I don't get the dirty water. I just get low water pressure. So I don't, so that's why I say the people that are getting it must be downhill from the older pipes.
And then talk to the water department. It's a, just, uh, again, I don't know. I mean, uh.
Well.
The water department, is that a, that the pri-?
Yeah.
What is the structure of it? Is it all bureaucrats? Does it have any elected?
It has an elected board.
Who are they accounted, Volto?
So what we did is years ago, we set up their funds to be separate because what was happening is whenever they would get surplus funds. The town would take the money and go buy things.
So it has to stay in there.
Right, so the financial board said, we're gonna, we want something that'll keep the money, water and sewer revenue apart from town, from town tax money, yes. So they have their own fund and they have their own, um, I forgot what it's called, this form of a. Not free cash, it's like a state, like the schools access and, yeah, retained earnings, something like that.
I, I only mentioned to talk to them because in our budget meeting with the water and sewer department this year, they talked about the water. They talked about things that they're doing toward it. They talked about the grant that they got. They're looking into drilling a new well as a water source that will alleviate some of the problems.
Yeah.
But they. They're, they're.
They're actively working on it.
Oh, no doubt.
So when anyone.
And that's what the hydrant flushing is for. They do the hydrant flushing to proactively.
Flush it out.
Flush the pipes and what happened.
So that, it's not just status quo. They're actively gonna make some major changes here that maybe in a year will, will be.
I don't know how long and I don't know how much of it will be fixed, but they are making active decisions. There's a superintendent. There is the water board that, um. Have regular meetings that you could ask to be on their agenda anytime.
Okay, thank you.
And they've got longevity, they've got longevity, their department does. They're a good group. And they have a active planning, I would say.
But they are accountable to the taxpayers in town. And if someone had a grievance that they're not doing enough. For instance, not saying they're not.
Yeah.
Uh, but they could go to those meetings.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, I've gone and.
And, and they go there and complain or just.
Well, I complained when I lost water pressure. They used to do something and did that.
Yeah, or, or all your whites are rusty. Yeah, I have clean water.
I have a well.
So I don't know if it's a source issue, how come it gets to me and it's clean? You know, so I, I wonder if it's infrastructure, then maybe some of the three point eight billion, a tr- a trillion, I'm sorry. Maybe the infrastructure bill, it's infrastructure bill, maybe there's some grant money that we can chase.
Well, I, I feel, I feel like in a, a meeting in June, it would be nice to, um, get the documentation on the American Relief Act money that's coming our way. Cause my understanding from Department of Revenue was this not is not make believe, we are actually going to get a significant sum of money. Significant and I think.
We want all the pipes.
Well, I think we need to sit down and, I mean, water and sewer has their own retained earnings too. So I think we need to think this through. And departments need to weigh in and we need to really consider, this is a one-time thing. I don't think we get this every year, right?
Yes, and I believe Rebecca's worked very hard at, uh, pulling all those things together. Along with the department heads in her monthly meetings.
Great.
And, uh, she actually was able to attend one of the digging deeper into the American Rescue Act.
Great, that's the American Rescue Act.
Yes.
That's what it means.
So she's, uh.
It's like two million dollars. It's a lot of, of money, significant.
Not for us.
Yes, yes, that's the Department of Revenue had to say to me three times. Yes.
So could we make it a point of this board that we're gonna keep our finger on that pulse to make sure that.
Well, we have Rebecca.
Nobody drops the ball on that.
Believe it when I see it.
It's kinda, it's kinda like the two hundred thousand of the school budget.
Yes, because they are changing it all the time and they're putting limitations on it and restrictions on it and they're, they, just like everything else.
But we need to make sure we have representation in the, in on Beacon Hill, so we don't get beat out by the city boys, you know? The Emirates and the, 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 the Brocktons and the, and the Wusters of the world, okay? We need to make sure we have representation. Well, though if the funds come into the state, are they gonna get a block grant?
Coming into the state, they're coming into the counties and for the Essex County, it is then allocated to the towns within.
Who makes the decision at the county level? I mean, we don't have county.
There was a list. Already all.
It's already listed and published. Yeah, there is a list. You can find.
So it goes to specific. That's interesting. So they're bypassing the state house.
Oh, yeah.
Fantastic.
It's already all listed. And that's why, um, we only approved. A couple of the capital improvement plans for this year because we didn't have a lot of free cash. And because we knew that this other money was coming this year.
If we spent our money, then we don't ever need it anymore.
So we need to, we still need, we still owe the cemetery a lawnmower and we have to talk about other, you know, ways to spend it.
But I have to imagine there's one of the two million dollars worth of pipes that need to be replaced.
Well, yes, but that's why I'm saying maybe, I don't know that that's where you want to sink it all.
We need clean water. I mean, I don't think any.
I don't know that our water is unsafe. I mean, I just.
I haven't said it was unsafe, but I'm telling you, if it's all brown, it's gonna affect your.
And there is also an article, yeah, in this warrant to, for this. They're replacing the.
Yeah, the water mains.
Union Street.
Okay.
And they're doing that, um, opportunistically because National Grid is also doing a project. So they're gonna do the repaving. So they're replacing those main, mains while the street is opened up. So they're looking and they're opportunistic and they're doing what they can.
Part of the selectman's time is I want everybody that can and cares and wants to get the water issue resolved. So it's transparent. How about that?
So, yeah.
And, 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 um, keep the, keep your eye on the ball and everybody try to get involved.
Well, that was one of the reasons for consolidating the planning and the zoning under Rebecca. So that there is this constant conversation and exchange of ideas. And she is a great conduit for all that, because before we had all these different.
What do you mean by zoning?
So everything is under, if you look at the omnibus, I don't know if you've looked through it yet. If you look down, you'll see that there is an economic development and conservation department. Yes.
Seems like the catch-all, uh, you know?
It, it, well, it's a good catch-all because it's taking all this stuff that used to kind of operate in, in good, in, um, good intentions. But they operated separately and often, you know.
Right hand didn't know what the left hand was doing.
Correct. And now we have.
But as far as zoning goes, I mean, there's only boards, quasi-conditional, so that shouldn't be interfered with in any way.
It's just, it's just a coordination of these efforts and of changes that need to be made in different bylaws, things like that. And just, it's a long time coming and it's a good thing. It's a good thing.
That's all. Yeah. What was my second one?
You did too.
I wanted, I wanted the tax, uh, uh, in fall.
He wants the tax in.
And then the second thing was, you know.
The water.
The dirty water.
Dirty water. There's a song about that.
Yeah.
Items, uh, uh, other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting. Dan, you got anything?
I don't have any.
Bill?
None.
Kathy?
None.
Uh, Jason?
No.
Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't have anything. Uh, correspondence, seeing none?
None.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at eight forty-three P M.
All in favor?
Alright.
Unanimous.
Call this like the selectmen's diet. I get home, I get to eat like one bite of something, run down here.
Uh, we have a meeting this week.
On Thursday, Jason, Jason, I have a meeting now.
That was, what, six thirty?